I would like to welcome everybody to this February 12th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman to discuss our electric rates. This was, we felt like this was something that we wanted to spend a little more time on and be focused on than to talk about it at a regular meeting. So at this time, I'd like to open the meeting with prayer, if you would. Heavenly Father, we just ask that as we do those things to be in the best interest of our community, that they, we do those things that will be pleasing to Thee. In Your name we pray, amen. Would you join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag of our country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and self-worth. Matt Turk, would you call the board?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderman Harris, present. Alderman Astor, here. Mayor Outlaw, here. Alderman Kinsey, here. Alderman Beas, present. Alderman Odom, here.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over unless anybody has any comments or anything, because I'll turn it over to the city manager, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor Members of the Board. As the mayor alluded to, we are here today to discuss the electric rates, especially, specifically, the wholesale rate increase that NACMPA is looking to pass on to us from a increase that is being passed from Duke. So we wanted to get some direction from the board. Our goal is to get some-
Mr. Stevens, as you're doing that, if we just, for the public, if you would mention what that acronym is, who it consists of, you don't need to enumerate every member, but just so the public has a little more information on-
Sure.
-what we are and who we are a member of and that type of thing.
Yeah, NACMPA is made up of, well, it's the eastern North Carolina section and the western North Carolina section, but ultimately, that's NACMPA and NACMPA-1. But NACMPA stands for the North Carolina-
Eastern Municipal-
Eastern Municipal Power Agency. And it consists of thirty-two entities, I think, thirty-one of those being cities. And we are a member of that, and we contribute financially to that organization, and they provide administrative and support services with regards to negotiating the contracts at a wholesale rate so that we can purchase at a lower cost and provide that electricity to our customers. Because as we join together as one large customer, then obviously, it helps drive that rate down, but that's kind of it in a nutshell. And as I've said, there's an eastern and a north, eastern and a western branch of that agency, and they are based out of Raleigh. They actually have a western municipal agency as well, it's called NACMPA-1. And so essentially, they do the negotiating with Duke, provide the legal services, provide rate recommendations and changes, and each of its members has a membership on the board, a representation on the board. Our representatives here are Mr. Bissard, as well as myself, and Alderman Woman Jemisha Harris. So as I was explaining, this, the reason why we're here today is to discuss the potential electric rate increase that we're, that's being projected, and to get some direction from the board. We are going to present you a presentation. I think Charlie's prepared with some financial numbers. Myself, JR, are here to support in any way. We do have a worksheet that's dynamic. We can kind of work as we go if there's any kind of other scenarios y'all want to consider, but we have, basically, our intent is to present to y'all what the financial outlook is for the city and how this rate increase will impact us and what we can do to try to defer that if possible. So at this point, without going any further into what Charlie's going to present, I'm going to turn it over to him, and feel free to stop at any point if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Good afternoon. Thank you for taking the time to be here and sit through this meeting and allowing me to facilitate the discussion. I need to put ahead of this, right? Charlie? Is that better?
Yes.
I'd like to, at first, take a few minutes to review our strategic plan, and I picked out a few snapshots that I thought may be important for today's discussion. It certainly was guiding principles for me as I was charged with looking into this matter. So a few things that stepped out in my mind, critical issues that the strategic plan mentioned, was financial stability and customer value and community and economic development. And also, I identified a weakness, and that weakness is that the Department of Public Utilities must balance the rate disparity perception problem with future rate planning to satisfy customer expectations. And also established a few goals. One of the goals that I've noticed was complete long-term capital planning improvements in rate planning to the electric, water, and wastewater utilities by January 2017 to prevent significant rate fluctuations and ensure reliability of systems. It also goes on to say, "A reserve fund policy exists, and the reserve will not fall below the established limits of days cash on hand for a period of more than one fiscal year." And I believe that days' cash on hand policy is set at ninety days, and we'll discuss more of that as we get into the rest of the information.
Is that current voted on policy, or is that just, was that something the board voted on? Or-
That's a formalized policy that was established by the board. I don't have in front of me what year it was done, but we established the formalized policies for both the electric, water, and sewer fund, and then ultimately, we came back and actually have a formalized policy now, I guess, for the general fund. Is that correct, JR?
Yes. Thank you.
It also establishes a goal to target that we're in the top twenty-five percent quartile as bench, for reliability indices as benchmarked by the American Public Power Association. And there's another goal, to ensure that electric, water, and wastewater system capacity is available to support economic development and community growth. With that said, we do have a purchase power agreement with electric cities in NACMPA, as Mr. Stevens has mentioned. NACMPA is a North Carolina Eastern Municipal Power Agency, and our purchase agreement with them is a full requirement purchase power agreement. It was adopted in April of 2015. We have debt service associated with that agreement through 2025. We're contracted in that agreement through 2043. However, there are early out notices that we can, communities can give, starting in 2027, and late out notices by 2035.
Charlie, some of what that involves is that the city of New Bern, if we decide to go out and put a solar field or a generation plant, there are certain preclusions to make sure that we ourselves are not competing against the power agency or our vertical integrative model, Duke Energy. Is that correct?
That, in a nutshell, yes, sir.
And so basically, we can't be, we can't, we cannot compete against our supplier.
Not only, not only do we hand-
Within limits, we can do co-generation for load management, or we can do generation for load management, but there's limitations.
There's limitations, yes. We have some flexibility on what we can generate or produce ourselves, but we're really handcuffed if we want to go into the competitive marketplace and find lower wholesale power costs. We're tied up into this agreement. This is where our risk lies. So it was announced that NACMPA is increasing their power cost to us beginning April 1st, 2019. Our wholesale power costs are going to be going up 1.2%, and that was approved by the NACMPA Board of Directors. What that means is our demand charges are going to increase from $21.88 to $22.46 per kilowatt, and our energy costs are going to go from two and a, 2.4 cents to 2.5 cents per kilowatt hour. So if this, if this were to pass through to our retail customers directly as it is, the average retail cost increase, the average customer, average residential customer would see a retail, would see a cost increase of about $1.70 a month. That's kind of what it equates to. April 1st, 2020, NACMPA has forecasted a 2.4% increase. However, that's not firm, and I would call that speculative at this point, and I do believe we should use that as a good planning tool. April 1st, 2021 and beyond, their projections are very minimal, they're less than a percent increase, they're very flat-lined going out the next twenty years. But as you all know, the energy business is often dependent on weather and fuel supplies, and so this is a moving target that we should look at continuously.
One question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is, is that $1.70, that's all will be imposed on the customer? Or is that $1.70 per kilowatt? Since you mean.
This is my way to kind of simplify what a 1.2% wholesale increase would look like to the average retail customer, if that was to be passed on directly as 1.2% to a retail customer.
So you're saying that they will only have $1.70 added to their bill?
A month.
A month.
Estimated on an average. Next, I'd like to discuss the impact of these price increases on our operating cash projections, on our operating cash on hand requirements, as well as our rate stabilization fund and the forecast. This is where I'm going to get tongue-tied. The next few slides are all projections, forecasts, with New Bern absorbing the wholesale rate increase. There's no retail changes on any of these slides that I'm going to be presenting. We ran these slides out through '25, '26, because that's a significant date when the debt service comes off of our contract with NACMPA on the power agency. So in this particular case, I'm looking at maintaining ninety days cash on hand, and I'm not forecasting the 2020 NACMPA rate projection. And everything looks pretty good. Our operating cash is in the light blue bar. The middle bar, green, is our cash required to maintain ninety days. And the dark purple bar to the far right of each column is our rate stabilization fund. It looks like we're able to maintain our days on cash and our rate stabilization fund well out past where the debt service comes off. And as low as we dip here is in 2023, where our rate stabilization dips off to about $5.7 million. That's maintaining a ninety-day policy. Ninety days is the, is the policy bare, at the bare minimum. Staff would feel more comfortable operating closer to 120 days so that we have some wiggle room. Sometimes our forecasts aren't right, sometimes we have unknown expenditures come up. So the next series of slides I'm going to show is going to compare ninety days cash and 120 days cash. So this slide, I'm going through the same scenario. There's no, I'm not forecasting any increase next year with NACMPA. However, I'm setting the limit at maintaining 120 days cash. And you can see that we start to draw down our rate stabilization fund to a low point of about $1.5 million in 2023. But we stay positive in rate stabilization fund out till we get to about 2024, and then we start to see an increase from what I suspect to be retail sales growth, and then in 2025, the debt service comes off, and we start to grow again there. So absorbing the rate certainly looks like we can maintain our rate stabilization fund and maintain 120-day cash on hand.
You got a question?
I'll let him finish.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I would say you're not in any way forecasting any major cap improvements with this information rate.
I would like to discuss that. Yeah, you're stealing my thunder.
Okay.
So now, now we're going to look at this for ninety days cash on hand, and we're looking at it for 120 days cash on hand, including the forecasted rate increase in 2020 by NACMPA. And ninety days of cash on hand still looks really good. We start to draw down our rate stabilization fund, hits a low in 2023, down to about $5.5 million. And then 2024, '25, we start to see some, some growth, some increase based on sales, and then the debt service comes back off on 2026. Moving on to 120-day forecast, we're still able to maintain, this includes the NACMPA rate increase in 2020, and maintaining 120 days cash on hand. We start to draw down on our rate stabilization fund a little more aggressively, and looking out to year 2023, that fund dips down to about $1 million. Stays positive out to about 2024, and then again, we start to see some increase from some sales, and then obviously, some relief from the debt service in '25, '26. So here's a quick summary I put together. It's a lot of information, it's a lot of data, there's a lot of different ways to look at this, but based on kind of the way that, that I sorted it out and had input from JR and Mark, it looks to me like if we, if you absorb this rate, your worst-case scenario is, if we maintain 120 days cash, we'll reduce our rate stabilization fund to about $1 million in 2023, and then it starts to grow back up again. Is that okay with that? Now, I'd like to take a pause from that financial look and discuss the electric system conditions, and then when I get done with that, go back to the financial model and wrap up the discussion about the electric system conditions. We did a long-range electric system study, which was required by the strategic plan. It was performed by Power Services with assistance from the New Bern staff, and we completed that about September of last year, 2018. We utilized a system growth model, which was moderate growth, through 2038, and we utilized a complex modeling software to analyze the New Bern-specific system. Based on that study, we used some load, moderate load growth on the west side of the system, as well as moderate growth on the south side of the system. And that, when I say moderate growth, I'm talking about less than a percent load growth every year. So it's, it's, it's not a crazy number, it's not expecting large economic development. It's pretty reasonable, steady growth. We found during that study that there's high loading conditions at the Trent Road substation, there's high loading conditions at the Lewis Farm substation. We do have some distribution feeder, low voltage conditions that we're concerned about, and there's some equipment at Glen Burnie and Trent Road substation that are at end of life. The most important thing from this study is the N minus one substation transformer contingency. And that, what that means is we have four substations, three substations and six transformers presently. If we lose any one of those transformers, we cannot support peak load conditions.
Well, I mean, hypothetically, do you have a, a period of time that one of those would be out anywhere from one minute to three weeks, or?
If we lost it, and we were in the rental market to find a used one or get a loan, you'd probably weeks to months. New, you're looking close to a year.
So on this distribution feeder, low voltage conditions, is that a, is that a point source problem somewhere, and in any way does it affect the integrity of, of machine equipment and?
It has the potential to, and it's spotty in different locations based on the sources being fed from and the system load conditions.
So normal variance in output is a margin of error or a range? Are you saying that's that type of-
We, we, we try to regulate the system between plus and five, plus and minus 5% of the nominal voltage. When you get the, when you get the wires pushed out so far, that voltage has a tendency to drop. We try to pick that up with other regulating devices, but when you get so far out, you can't support the physics any longer. And you need more sources of power, and you need to get your sources closer to the loads. And so that's another part of the system improvements that need to be done.
Charlie, let me ask you a question. How old are these six transformers that we, is it six that you say we had?
Six.
How, how old are they, or what's the age of the oldest?
I don't know the age of the oldest. I would, I've seen them in the eighties, but I don't know the age on every single one of them right now.
So you think some of these that we have were purchased in the eighties? And is there a typical lifespan for this piece of equipment?
You'd, we'd depreciate for twenty years, twenty years. You'd like to get more out of it. The thing also to keep in mind with these, the heavier we load them, the shorter the lifecycle is. And that's another benefit of adding more transformers to this system. We can just move some of the loading off of these transformers, give them some relief, and hopefully, they'll last a little bit longer. We have one targeted to be, budgeted to be replaced this year, and I've received very favorable bids on it. I haven't pursued purchasing yet, I wanted to get through these discussions and talk about-
What's the ballpark price of a transformer in a substation?
Million bucks.
How much?
A million dollars. Add another $100,000, install it maybe, $200,000, add more if you're going to buy land.
Alderman Kinsey?
Is that a stock item that you would have in stock, just in case this type of thing occur?
No, sir. It would be very, it would be very difficult to find one that's available that we could lease or loan. Best case is we could maybe find a company that rents transformers that are on mobile Those prices are very expensive. This is something that we want to be out in front of, and we don't want to find ourselves in that position.
At the same time, I know we need some redundancy, but you don't want to have an idle, idle asset sitting there that if you had a backup at that price, what as an industry? And I know the small transformers years ago, you didn't rebuild them, you just, you just got new ones. Do you, do you take one out of the service and get it rebuilt by, I don't know if it's Carolina Transformers now or who, or do you actually just go out and get a new one?
There is a market for that, depending on, you know, once we get in and roll up our sleeves on what the details of this plan is, we can optimize and have some cost savings where it makes sense. I'm not at that level yet where, I'm trying to find the best exact way to go about doing this. What I'm saying is, is that we have some needs, we need to budget for those needs, and I'll be asking you for your support to, to fund those needs so that I can get to work, come up with the best plan, firm up my estimates, and get these things, these built and make a better electrical system.
So if I understand you correctly, the way to really, to help these older transformers out is to add newer ones to take some of the load off of them so that they will last longer, is that what?
That's, that's-
In a nutshell?
In a nutshell, but it's, it's not only maybe just moving the, while you're doing that, there's other improvements that can be done. For instance, we can, most, two-thirds of New Bern is served on this side of the river electrically. We've got wires stretched out all the way on the other side of the river. That gets very, very hard to support in contingency operations. So having those new transformers located on the other side of the river, it helps our, it resolves our N minus one contingency, but it also gives us backup resiliency for both sides of the river, so we can carry our loads during critical conditions.
Alderman Odom?
You said it was a twenty-year depreciation. What would the longest-term financing do you think you could get on a transformer? Ten?
All right, listen. Excuse me, honestly, we were looking at, with everything combined that he was wanting to do, we were looking at probably anywhere from fifteen to twenty. But it's all just going to depend on what the palette of the banks are.
So just, again, round numbers, try to keep it simple, a million bucks, twenty-year loan, annual debt service of $300,000?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the details of that study has led us to basically three different phases and a certain cost estimate that goes along with those phases. Again, these are kind of high-level, it's a high-level discussion, I'm not talking about all the details and where things are going to be located, and are there any economies of scale, and how do I, you know, provide some efficiencies to this estimate? But Phase One, it really needs to be done in the next five years, and it's at a cost of about $10 million. What that would provide us is another transmission tap on the other side of the river, on the other side of Trent. It would allow us to make some significant changes to our distribution circuits so we can interconnect strategically between that new substation and Trent Road substation and Glen Burnie substation, providing some redundancy and backup there. And there's also some substation equipment that is aging at both Glen Burnie and Trent Road substation that needs to be cared for and improved. Phase Two, again, this is kind of five years out. We need to make some, some improvements to our distribution feeders so that they can carry more capacity, they can strategically be located and switched in and out of other sources between both sides of the river to carry contingent loads. And that cost, I'm estimating, would be about $73,000. And then Phase Three, we're looking zero to ten years out to install some line capacitors, and that's about $105,000.
Charlie, I would, I would say that the way you've got that, obviously, just being a businessperson, if you could do a Phase Two at $73,000 and Phase Three at $105,000, I would do those before Phase One, but I'm sure you're going to tell me that you can't do the two and the three without the one first, is that right?
Still doesn't solve N minus one contingencies.
Right, okay. Because I would, I would opt to go ahead and do some of them other, other ones first.
Pick the easy fruit.
But you can't do them-
Correct.
-without doing the major.
And just real quick to add, when Charlie talks about the, the backfeeding contingencies for what we ran into, I just want to kind of keep y'all in mind of what happened in December is a situation where we were trying to backfeed from the Lewis Farm station back into downtown and try to get as many customers as we could back on, but the problem is, is that was a peaking time, because everybody was getting home, they were turning their lights on, they were cooking, they were heating up their houses, and what it, what it led to is a peaking factor that would not allow us to backfeed as far as we really wanted to. We got about as far as James City, where the food line and the airport is, and we couldn't pick up any more load. We tried, and then it would kick the whole system, trip the whole system off again, and we'd have to try, you know? And we did that twice, I think, during that, because I was at there with Charlie at Cal Road. We attempted it twice, and we, it was just too much load on the system. As soon as people's heat strips and things like that kicked on, bam, it was gone. So if people had questions about what was going on during that time, that was what was happening, and that's the reason why, you know, instead of the entire system being out, there were certain people, and then those certain people were- And then those certain people were lost at, you know, a couple of different times for short periods of time. We'd get them back on, but eventually we had to basically do away with the plan to try to get as much as we could because the system couldn't support it.
Well, Mark, to that, and I know we didn't do this when we did load management, and certainly we were losing 40% of load management that we now identify with AMI. But is there any... Out there in the industry, is there a blue-sky phenomenon correction where you could actually put load management and minimally feed a house, a business, and isolate out large pieces of equipment that would be damaged, that you could keep it on when you're having to do what you said, backfeed, to where you wouldn't be a blackout, brownout, whatever? Is there anybody doing that out there where you would put a, you know, particularly on high-usage homes or businesses, you would actually put a super-load management on it to limit the use?
Typically, the way I've done that in other systems is I made voluntary requests for load curtailment.
So you could automatically go in there. Are we doing that?
We have... I've not done any since we've been here, but that means getting on the radio, getting on the press and telling people we're in a condition that you need to help us out. And it starts with industry, and it starts with our commercial folks. And they know very well that we're serious about this. And if you shut down some air conditioning, you can stop a manufacturing process, that'll help you stay on. If you don't, unfortunately, you can find yourself in a forced outage situation.
Well, if one person lost a life through what we went through a couple of months ago, it would be worth it to have that, that at least our lights, our streetlights and things are on as to where our first responders are not in harm's way. Because that was a very dangerous situation. So if that's a possibility and you could get some figures on that, that might be something the city would want to look into, that we don't have a total blackout as to where our first responders are in harm's way. What are you guys thinking?
Well, voluntary load curtailment is no cost. It's just a matter of announcing to the public that we need relief and asking for public support. Turn your lights off, turn your conditioning down, in trouble.
Do you do that through code red or what?
It could be done that way, but well...
I've never done it that way.
It doesn't go... It extends outside the city, so it probably wouldn't hit on...
Typically starts with your key accounts and picking up the phone and saying, "Hey, can you help me out here?"
I think what he's... I think the way I understand what the mayor's talking about is, is there any way that when we get into a critical load issue, can you isolate the 240-volt stuff out of my house and just let me have 120-volt? So I'm not using a tremendous amount of electricity during a critical time.
And I think the answer to that is from a probability factor here. If our system is at a rate that we don't need to be in the business, is probably what us consultant would tell you. Is that correct?
If we're trying to operate our system on load management, it's not a good practice. It should be telling us something. Are there things that we can do to optimize load management? Absolutely. Am I prepared to discuss them today and have I had time to look into it? No, I haven't. But it is a goal mine that I would like to optimize what we're doing there. But I don't have a solution to give you to offset this N minus one contingency issue.
If you had a second station on the east side of the river, would you have been able... Do you think you would have been able to successfully backfeed the entire system?
I'd have to look at the loading conditions at that time. It would be pretty close.
At least a lot more than what we had during...
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. And that goes back in and me rolling up my sleeves when I start to work on this project and figuring out some of these distribution feeder changes and optimizing so that we can have the best contingency plans based on the new substation. But I'm not there yet. Better come back to funding.
On your Phase One, the transmission tap, how much mitigation is there in our discussions would do? In other words, I'm looking at the $10 million and seeing that there's any means of cost savings as far as getting that down to a more reasonable figure that the board could deal with than $10 million. Is there any... Well, anyway, we'll get into that later. I don't know. We have some ideas on that.
So now moving back into the financials, what I'd like to do is go through the same sort of analysis, but add in to our operating expenses a $10 million revenue bond. And starting off that analysis with $10 million revenue bond, setting the standard at 90-day cash reserves excluding the NACEMPA 2020 rate increase. It looks like we can do this and maintain our rate stabilization fund. It starts to draw down and hits a base at about year 2025 and a value of about $2.1 million. And then the next year it starts to pick back up with our debt service coming off from the NACEMPA. If we throw in 120-day cash on hand recommendation that staff wants to operate by, you'll see that 120 days cash on hand starts to drop off. Let me first start off with rate stabilization. We draw down rate stabilization at the end of year 2022, and we deplete that. And then that same year, obviously, we start to draw down on our operating cash to the point where out in about 2025, we're down to about 115 days cash on hand. Still above our policy, but, you know, obviously, staff would try to like to do better than that if we can.
JR, I don't know as sure about this. Let the Department of Commission, similarly, in Enterprise Funds, more than 8% fund balance. Is that what they would generally want you to maintain? Is it more of the cash on hand, 90 days?
Sir, they're gonna want you to maintain at least that 8%, but in generality, but they'll look at this to see if we dip too low and they'll...
So based on, I think we were 159, we're now about 148 or something days on hand. What is our percentage of fund balance right now in the Enterprise Fund?
The Enterprise Fund, we don't actually calculate that. We focus more on the days' cash on hand itself.
I know that way. I mean, could you take from that, is it 28%?
I'd have...
I don't mean to hold you to it, but...
I'd have to go through and calculate it, but you're probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 40, depending on...
30 or what?
30 to 40, maybe. Like I said, I don't want to do math in public.
JR, I mean, why do we push... My question is, why are we even talking about 120 days on cash when 90 is our policy? And again, if we're pushing for something, just to push for it, that cash is going to help us in rate stabilization, it's going to help us in capital improvements and whatever. I mean, what's your thought process? Why would you go to 120? That's just like saying we're going to carry a 50% fund balance when 25 or 30 will do us just fine and we can reinvest that money.
Yeah, very similarly to what we're doing with the General Fund, where we put in place a, basically, a range of 25 to 35%. This is what we're looking at from a staff perspective of having a range. Now, 90 days is our floor. That's where we don't want to go below that. Anything below that, the policy says we would come back to you all for potential rate increases to make sure that we get back above or do certain things to make sure that we get back above the 90 days. That's why it's a floor. So you don't want to be going up and down on the 90 days. You want to pick a target that's a little bit higher to go around, to fluctuate at. So we're looking at 120 as kind of our ceiling, as our cap on days that we would like to keep on hand. And everything above that, we would put into rate stabilization to help against protect these future rate changes.
I think 100 days would be sufficient. Again, those are monies that we're collecting from our customers that could be reinvested, not have to, you know, raise rates, do things like that rather than just cushion ourselves. I mean, if 90 days is our cash on hand, I remember back in the day, we didn't have 30 days or 40 days cash on hand. So, you know, 90 days is the policy. We said if you want it, say to 100, but I think 120 would be excessive based on the needs of our citizens and other things that we need to do. I mean, just my opinion right now.
Alderman, you make a great point there, but one of the things I want everybody to keep in mind is we just went through a hurricane that cost the electric funds somewhere between $4 and $5 million. And that would, you know, yes, we're... Hopefully, we'll get all that money back from FEMA, but, you know, we still... Sometimes FEMA's quick, sometimes they're slow. We want to make sure that we have enough to operate off of for... To make sure that we're protecting our citizens and our customers.
And I think the bond market will probably tell us, if we get that far along in the process, whether or not they're going to go through this whole financial analysis again to see if we're qualified before we can bring anything back to you.
Yes, sir. JR, what's the dollar amount for 90 days cash on hand? And the same for 120, if you've got it right there?
12.6 million for 90 days and 16.8 million for 120. Again, these are all just rough numbers.
And the last number that I could find was in the, I believe it was November, the end of November. We were at like 143 days. Do you know what we are now, or is that the latest that we have?
I just sent that out to Mr. Brenda the other day. I can't recall what it was off the top of my head. Somewhere around that neighborhood.
And I'm probably safe to say that we have expended all of the funds due to the hurricane? Is that a safe assumption?
I'm not expecting any more expenses.
And we have... How much have we received back?
We've not received anything for, in terms of electric, back yet. One of the things, though, to keep in mind, that a lot of the expenses that Charlie is talking about are not... We're not paid for cash-wise out of electric yet. We've paid for... We have the Hurricane Florence Fund, and that's where everything is being paid from. So at the end of the year, we'll be looking at either a do-to, do-from, a true-up or something like that at the end of the day.
So when we have a storm, we pay for enterprise expenses out of our General Fund?
We have... No, no. Try to put this in, simplify this. We have what's called pooled cash. And basically, all of our cash for the city is sitting in a couple, just a couple of bank accounts. So what happens is that they... Cash is pulled out of that, out of those pooled cash accounts to pay all bills, whether it be for the hurricane or regular operations. That cash is... It's reconciled monthly, but what the portion that we talk about when we talk about the cash for the electric fund is included in that lump amount. So when... So basically, we set up what we call do-tos, do-froms between the operating funds and the centralized pooled cash fund to account for it. I'm sorry, I'm getting into some complications.
I think I understand what you're saying. So let me see if I can try to help. So we have all the various funds, General Fund, Electric, Water, Sewer, but we have one bank account, and all of our money goes in that one bank account.
Yes.
So it doesn't really matter where it comes out as far as the cash goes. It's the allocation of how that money gets reconciled.
Correct.
So if we're still at 143 days on the Electric Department, we're still not anticipating going any lower than that. We could potentially be increasing that when we get paid back from FEMA for electric department-related expenses.
Yeah, for ones that... For items that are currently expensed to it, and those items will be removed out at some point.
Well, to that answer and that question, I noted I was in Public Works the other day, and Matt had four books about that tall. Is that a comprehensive Hurricane Florence, or is that just Public Works?
That's probably just getting started.
Okay.
I'm sure it's just Public Works.
If it's only this tall, it's probably getting started.
No, there were four of them.
Hurricane Irene, we had volume... I had five volumes that were five-inch binders full of paper. That filled up a whole bookshelf.
Yeah, following on what questions that Alderman Odom was asking, what's our reserve? What's the amount of money we have in the rate stabilization? Sorry, rate stabilization fund?
Currently, as of right now, we have 1.57 million sitting in rate stabilization.
1.5?
1.57 million, just a minute.
And that's what rate stabilization is, isn't it?
Understood, but I thought we got a little bit more in there than that. Is the difference between the 120 days and the 143 days that you have, that additional money should have been put into rate stabilization, correct? Wasn't that how it was supposed to work?
Yeah, it also requires a board budgetary approval to make some of those changes.
Well, we wouldn't do that unless they stamped and instructed us to make the...
Okay, but so I'm just... Because I'm just trying to figure this out as we move ahead. So you said we have 16.8 million at 120 days, yes? So what is it at 143 days? It must be another $4 million, $5 million?
Roughly.
Okay, so then we put that... So we roughly have... We could potentially have six-plus million dollars in our rate stabilization fund, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to get at. So there's monies there. I feel like that was the whole idea in the rate stabilization fund. We don't even have to have a discussion about a rate increase as far as I'm concerned because it seems like those monies are there. And I have no problem going down to 100 days as long as we can protect those rates. Again, my thought.
If I can bring your attention to the graph, I don't know if I pointed it out, but the red line shows the number of days of cash on hand. The scale is on the right-hand side. So in this scenario, you can see that you start dropping below 120 days in year 2022, and you hit a bottom of about 115 days in 2025, and then you start to go back up. And it's still well above 90.
Help me out, guys. We had our retreat and we were presented that we had a scenario where we were receiving a wholesale cost increase that, yes, we've got money in rate stabilization, but we take it out, it's going to be gone, so you might be able to starve off this one, then you're going to have one next year. It was a pretty grim picture, and maybe I'm speaking for myself, that was painted for us. You know, I've been... You guys were thoughtful enough to share the spreadsheet with me. And I'm starting to look at these numbers, and to Alderman Bingle's point, what I did... I like spreadsheets for dummies. The one you sent me was a spreadsheet for an expert. So I went in and hid a lot of things. And I looked at total days' cash on hand and rate stabilization together because to me, it's cash. Regardless, like you said, we have two bank accounts, regardless of which accounts it is, it's our money. And when I look at that and I extrapolate a 0% rate increase in the retail rate, factoring in a 1.2% this year and a 2.4, I think, next year, we would maintain a 90-day cash on hand balance. Without your revenue bond, we would fall just below it in 2024, '25. But then in '25, '26, we have about $3.5 million of debt service that would roll off. $3.5 million in debt service is a lot that will add to build that back up. Now, I understand, that's a very simplistic view about it, and it doesn't take any consideration into your capital expenditures. But, you know, from where we went a couple Saturdays ago, thinking, oh, my goodness, we're forced with this, you know, situation to, well, you know, if we maintain, we can even look at 120-day policy and look at a $10 million revenue bond. To me, I feel like I'm in a time warp zone or something from that meeting to where we are now. I do think that you brought up some good points that if we have transformers from the eighties, it's probably something we need to be addressed. I guess I'm a little surprised at that because I was being on the board for six years. It's the first time I've ever heard we've got transformers from the 1980s. We've had numerous discussions about rates for the last several years. Your predecessor said, "I would advise you not to take this big of... Not pass this big of an increase along to your customers" because I think it was 2017 or '18, you guys were going to be faced with an increase. That didn't happen. So we were aggressive, we won, we gambled. So I'm looking at this from a more aggressive standpoint. I think what you've... The wrench that's kind of been thrown in the discussion now is this $10 million revenue bond and all this improvement. My last comment that I want to make is, before, when we had this massive debt load, it was so important for us to grow our customer base because we had a static amount that we owed. The more customers we had, the easier it was for those folks to swallow their portion of that debt. We're at a point now, I kind of see the light at the end of the tunnel, in 2025. We're, we're at a point now, I kind of see the light at the end of the tunnel, in two thousand twenty-five, that debt rolls off. I think that, you know, I, I appreciate the strategic plans, the long-term vision, all that's good stuff. My personal opinion is, I think we need to start crunching some numbers to see what is the return on continuing to invest and grow our municipal electric system. Is it costing us money to operate? Are we making money? If we're making money, now we've got questions to answer to these folks sitting out here about why are we making money off of this. So I think we're at a point now with two thousand twenty-five, the debt rolling off, we need to start looking. And, and I'll be honest with you, I've, I've got a different opinion with our relationship with Duke. Duke is our primary, our sole supplier. I think we need to continue those conversations we've had, Alderman Bingle and the mayor and myself. We met after we had that Blue Sky outage, had some good conversation. There was, what, thirteen, fourteen people in the room? You know, maybe now's the time to start looking, because I, I truly believe, and, and my position has evolved on this over the last several years, but I truly believe it's advan, there's an advantage to you being on City of New Bern Electric. We're local, we're more responsive. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we notified Duke that they had an outage, correct? They didn't even know that. So I think there's an opportunity to partner with Duke. You know, maybe it's some future stations that we might want to partner with them together, do a joint venture, but before we even get there, you know, we've got to come to the reality that we've got several thousand customers that live outside of our city limits, that really don't have a voice. We used to have an electrical advisory committee, we don't have that anymore. We've got customers inside the city limits, like myself, full disclosure, that's not on the City of New Bern power. So I think that the time is, is here, very soon, if it's not right now, to sit down with Duke, take a look at our grids, and see if we can try to condense ourselves back to servicing customers within our city limits, and maybe there's a trade-off with Duke. Maybe they take what's outside, maybe we can take what's inside, but right-size our grid, and then when we start talking about growing, we're talking about growing our tax base, we're talking about growing our city, and we're not just talking about growing electric customers. That, that's probably all the comments I'll have today. But I, I am pleased to see this, because I agree with Alderman Bingle. Based on my calculations, I don't think we need to do a retail rate increase this year or next year, and I'm pretty comfortable in saying, and I think we're good with retail rates through two thousand twenty-five.
Well, I just want to add to that. I, I'm, I've not heard in any of this discussion, and I'm, I'm going to be way out there and left field doing this, but everybody, if you're not to me, would turn carbon bubble. You need to read up on it a little bit. You know, twenty years ago, you flushed a commode, and you used three gallons of water. You use about one point six gallons of water when you flush a commode now, and, and we've talked many times, Jordan Hughes, about our water and sewer and lack thereof of use, all because of the green factor. But, you know, if you look at, when you look at electricity, this is not a one- to five-year projection. This is a one-to-fifty-year projection of your grid, and I don't know that we need a power line all the way to Church Street in Havlock, but, but I like all that Alderman, Alderman's saying, but to that, if, if we saw when the market went green, with the help of the federal government and others, and we started conserving water, the projections I read is in fifty years, you'll be using forty percent less electricity, just off of the, you know, getting away with parasitic use, you know, warming systems on equipment and all of this, where you turn them on quick and all that kind of stuff. When you get all that parasitic use out of the way, and, and the technology itself, nobody told anybody to go, to go get a LED bulb. You're not going to buy incandescent in the future market if you can even find one now. So when you're talking about all this, and we're preparing for the future, and that next substation and the growth, and if we look at it more holistically and a more defined geographic area, not a fragmented market, this is what troubles me. I mean, do we pay somebody twenty thousand dollars a year to be on a rapid deployment lease term on a major transformer to where we can take that one out of service that, that went down and, and maybe get it repaired? I don't know. But those are the things I don't have questions, answers to today. Yes, sir?
From what Alderman Bingle and Alderman Odom just spoke on, I agree with them, and that everything that you said to us just now, can you sum it all up into three sentences to me, where are we going and what are we going to do? Can you sum it all up?
Yes, sir.
Into three sentences. Can you just close it out for me on three sentences? All what you just said to us, where are we going and what we need to do?
I'm telling you that your rate stabilization fund looks healthy to support absorbing the wholesale rate increase.
Both of them?
Both of them. Both of them. I'm halfway through the discussion, telling you that I think it can support the ten million-dollar bond.
So in two thousand twenty-five, when the debt service is off, that was a stranded cost of the, of the buyout. I think the Sun Journal said we were about, what was it, twelve percent above the market? Now, I don't know what, again, that was, based on you've got rate structures, I think, you know, there's quite a few rate structure, Duke versus, there's quite a few of them that were substantially lower, or somewhere higher, but, you know, this is the confusing part of it. When that debt service is off, I, I have, I have City of New Bern Power Utilities, and I have Duke Power on different properties I have. And I'm going to tell you, it's night and day getting somebody with City of New Bern rapid, you know, to get out there and fix something, and trying to chase somebody down with Duke, and so I just can't say enough about the service in the City of New Bern. I mean, it, you know.
That's the value of public power.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I, I just, I did a little, I did a little bit of research on how, who dropped what rates, whatever, you know, when we didn't. Of course, here in the City of New Bern, you did two rate reductions before we did the buyout, so there were rate reductions there. You took the full weight of the buyout, so you had places like, you know, Apex only took two percent, Rocky Mount, I, I mean, Wilson took seventeen point six, and Rocky Mount took fourteen. So, you know, we basically, we took an additional, what did we do, fourteen, fifteen percent?
Fourteen and a half.
Fourteen and a half, and that was coupled with a three and a one point five, so you were probably, you took the most discount.
Fourteen and a half cumulative.
Oh, cumulative, so that included the three and the one point five?
If I'm, if my math's right.
Right. Regardless of that, we're at rates where I think nobody will ever be comfortable. I, I saw one post on Facebook, and I have to address it, that said, we are the highest electric rates in the country, and I have to laugh, because I'm from New York, and we have Con Ed, Consolidated Edison, Con Ed, and that Con, there's a reason for that word, Edison, and it is incredible what those people have to pay. So I, you know, I'm, I'm feeling confident that our rates are in line. The other thing, that it is confusing to our customers, and I know there's no way around it, I've had people complain to me about their six-hundred-dollar light bill, and when they brought it to me, their electric was really only three fifty. They had a water and sewer issue that made their rate, so they're looking at that one bill and saying, this is my electric. And we've got to find a way to kind of draw that out and help people understand they're just not reading their bills, or it's not laid out as well, so people can see it. I feel very good about what you've told us. I, spirit of transparency, I spent some time this morning speaking to Charlie, because I wanted to find out for myself. I feel comfortable in what he's telling me about no rate increases. Our citizens are hurting, so now, that even if he didn't tell me this, I would have said no to a rate increase, because we still have a lot of people with the impact of Florence, and now is not a good time to raise any kind of rate on our citizens. With that being said, I, I support no increases for the next two, two times, that we supposedly, we don't know about the next one, and I say, go ahead and get the information together, because the bond process is going to take a while. We need these upgrades. You know, we've been batting around upgrades to our infrastructure and everything for years, for years, and back in the day, the only thing that ever got done in the city was done because electric made a little bit of money. There was no money in the general fund. Everything came off of electric. You know, I don't know to apologize that or not, but we have what we have today, because back in the day, somebody had a little bit of forethought to, to make a little bit of money, to make some improvements in our community, and that's why we have what we have. In that sense, I think we should go ahead and make, if we can contain it, that's my only point. If we can contain it, then I say, go for it, because it looks like we have the funds and the revenues to do that, and at the end of the day, we'll have a much better system, and we certainly want the redundancy. We don't want to be in the mess we were in in December. So, Charlie, you've proven to me what I, how I saw you handle this situation in December. I believe you're, you're right on it, so.
Charlie, could you kind of, I mean, this is a little digression, but could you kind of update us on our emergency plan if that situation happened again? Where, where are we, or is that something you're still negotiating with Duke, as to some different additional contact places?
Duke is in the process of making permanent repairs. We are connected to a temporary tap, and we made that connection to a temporary tap without losing any of our customers. We did that without interrupting any service, and that, those repairs on that, that damaged area, it should be wrapped up by the end of February. So we're on a temporary service until the end of February. Once they put it all back together, nothing changes.
We couldn't use what the temporary as a permanent?
Certainly, but there still would be, it's not a flip of a switch that I can just turn, turn everybody back over, unplug the crock pot, and move you over here that quickly. We're still, Duke would have to come out, make some repairs, connect everything, assess the damages. We're still looking at six, eight hour, hours if the same situation were to happen again. It still does not alleviate the N minus one contingency that is on us today.
So the, the next parasitic, next substation is going to help on that?
Kind of resolve that. And my assessment since being here on the system is, we're winter peaking utility. When I talk about not being able to carry contingency loads, or, or have contingency plans that are based on peak conditions, non-peak conditions are pretty much between seventy degrees and fifty degrees. That's where I need to see the sweet spot of the day. And without that transformer right now, I'm even struggling to do maintenance on existing transformers, because I got to move that load, and I got to find a sweet spot in the weather to plan this work, and some of the work may take a week. To schedule it, get contractors lined up, do that work. So it's, we're doing it, but it adds some, some difficulties.
Everybody else is trying to do the same time, find that optimal weather pattern to do it, so if you're doing it with sows, they're all busy at that time period.
Yes. The, the other thing I can tell you is I had started a formal process with Duke to request another tap for New Bern.
So it wouldn't be where that temporary one is?
No, this is, I've asked them for a new tap on the others, on the south.
Lewis Farm?
On the south side of the system, on the other side of the Trent River, either on the hundred and fifteen KV system, or on the two hundred and thirty KV system, and I'm still evaluating which may be better for us. That's probably a six-month process, just to be in Duke's planning system, but I've got that started.
Well, wouldn't you think they would kind of, under the circumstances, kind of step that up for us?
That's, they are stepping it up.
But, but I mean, what, what proration is that? Is that a hundred percent New Bern or Duke would be paying for that, or?
The last I knew that Duke would provide the transmission tap to our station.
That's good.
That is very good.
Well, that, that's encouraging.
Charlie, it would be about a mile, depending on where we find land procurement, and so, and to Mr. Oliver's point, we have a very good relationship with Duke, and I don't want to have to go away. We need each other, and I'm going to leverage that as much as possible.
Would the two thirty and the one fifteen depend on, geographically, if you were near more industrial, commercial usage versus residential? Is that your thought pattern?
No, my thought pattern on, on the one fifteen and the two thirty is, the two thirty is a completely different source.
Right.
If I lose the one fifteen in a certain area, it takes out everything. If I have at least one station connected to the two thirty, I've got a couple of tricks up my sleeve. Problem is, that I need to evaluate is the physics of it. We, that's at the transmission side. We distribute at a much lower voltage based on that source. If I start mixing distribution, system that are served off from different sources, there are certain precautions and certain provisions that I need to take to be able to inter, to connect those both at the distribution level, and I want to make sure that I account for that in my thought process.
Yes, sir.
Do, do we have the real estate, the footprint in our existing substations to add transformer?
Lewis Farm, yes. Trent Road, there's plenty of space, Glen Burnie, there's plenty of space. Doesn't necessarily, you need it in a different location.
Right, I understand.
How big expense would that be to hit one of those footprints that Alderman Odom just spoke on?
A, a new substation?
Mm-hmm. How much money are we talking about?
I'd probably estimate eight million dollars.
That's in your phase one?
Is that one of your phase ones? Yes, that was your phase one.
But we, we could, it would be a different idea and concept, but we could add a third transformer to, or we could add an extra transformer to each one of our stations for one and a quarter apiece, maybe?
It's, a million, one point two million.
Right.
How would that help with the distribution then?
It doesn't help me on the distribution side.
That's, that's the problem, is the distribution.
It doesn't give me any help on, on the other side of the Trent River, and it doesn't back up the loads that are already there.
So what you're saying is you, we need a, a second substation on the east side of the Trent River.
Yes, sir. The, the other part of that, that plan is, we would be taking some load off of Trent Road and Glen Burnie, helping out the age expectancy on those transformers at Trent Road and Glen Burnie, and then also giving some headroom, so when there is economic development on the west side, we have that capacity there without having to build another substation. So this all, I'm trying to optimize this the best we can, and again, I, I'm not that, in the point where I have my sleeves rolled up, and I'm, I'm optimizing every efficiency. What I'm asking for is just your consideration and appetite to allow me to investigate the bonding requirements in all sincerity, and then it looks favorable right now that we can support that with our given, given rates. Allow me to go through the bonding process. They're going to do financial health checks on us, come back to, to you as the governing board, and, and review it with you, and see if it makes, still makes sense to you or not. This is not approving, spending, spending any of that money at this point.
Well, I, I personally, I'm in favor of even letting at least go through and explore the options and make a report back to the board.
There will be an expense in, in the bonding process, so we got, we have to be serious about, what do you think bonding is, thirty, forty, something about, dog, twenty-five thousand dollars for the legal counsel, and then probably, I think it's like fifteen thousand dollars for the LGCs for their.
How much, can you say that more clearly, because I can't hear you?
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, it's probably about twenty-five thousand dollars for the legal counsel and their assistance, and probably, I think it's around fifteen thousand dollars for the LGC and the assistance they provide us.
I suggest we wouldn't go through this process if we're just kicking tires.
Yeah, and, and one of the other things that everybody needs to keep in mind is that we would not be hiring a financial consultant for this process. We would also very likely just do a private placement rather than, rather than a public bond sale, that actually is, has worked out very well for us, and reduces our costs beyond the bond issuance, because we don't have to worry about the SEC requirements and all those other oddball things.
And Mr. Savitelli brought up an interesting point the other day, maybe staggering bonds, not, maybe not doing one bond, but doing two bonds and splitting them up over time, maybe a year apart, which then helps out on stabilizing our days of cash on our hand, our finance situation. So there's some strategy there that we still, we'd have to get down the weeds and really look at if.
Let me ask you a question, and it's Alderman Odom's mention of sitting down customer choice and, and specific geographic areas that Duke, the co-ops and the city have. In doing that, and this is just very hypothetical, but I know that, I only say this because I think I've heard you or some in your department say that, obviously, well, I wouldn't say obviously, but I'm not sure that y'all would put a substation at Lewis Farm if you were doing it. So if that's true, is there any possibility in our future capital needs that Duke Power has more grid potential out that way to serve than we do? that Duke Power has more grid potential out that way to serve than we do? That, and you go with this because I think you had mentioned that earlier to me.
I mean, that's just what I was talking about from a co-op standpoint. Just arbitrarily adding another one since we kind of have one that's not an ideal location. You know, is an opportunity to sit down with them and see if there's a partnership or either we could sell them ours and build a new one where we need it? That, that's sort of what I was talking about.
And before we could spend $10 million, is it worth the conversation to discuss this with Duke? I, I think we're in a good negotiating position right now. And I know, Mark, I know you would like to, you might want to elaborate on some things you've run into as a manager in this sitting down and having this mitigative session to try to figure out who gets what of a customer choice area or whatever.
Certainly from a economic development standpoint, it greatly benefits both us as the city. I would assume it, it benefits Duke and would also benefit the developer tremendously from a standpoint of, of knowing if you've got property at a certain location. Taking case in point, our Columbia Development, Academy Sports, all of that stuff. You know, we had a very small area and we were fortunate enough that, that we did have that area because it did wind up generating some customer base for us, being the parking lots as well as all of the out parcel development and the phase two development. We didn't get the big boxes, but a lot of that was with our push, also with, with Columbia Development Group's push to have a presence and a utility customer. And that was part of our reason for assisting them in the, the public infrastructure improvements necessary to do that development. And I think that I'm, I'm very excited and very happy to have them here now because that's a huge boost to our sales tax and economy in, in New Bern. But ultimately, having those predefined areas and these, these gray areas, it, it just leads to confusion. It leads to issues with development, in my opinion, where it makes it more complicated for a developer to determine those. We have to sit here and hope that our rate beats their rate and all this other. I mean, it's, it's just, it would be nice to have that simplified a little bit. Obviously, there's some, some state statute, state law stuff with regards to boundary maps that would have to be adjusted or amended mutually, or whether that is through a secondary agreement that we won't do this if y'all do this or that kind of stuff. But nothing that I don't think that smart attorneys like Scott and, and whomever else's attorneys we would have to deal with couldn't figure out.
There's also, if we consider giving up customers to gain other things, that also may have an impact on our, our general fund.
You mean your cash on hand, your days cash on hand or not the general?
The revenue we could receive.
Yeah, general fund, the general fund.
The cost of goods sold and everything and, you know, the, you know, again, I think Alderman Odom was mentioning that, you know, let's take, the city of Washington or La Grange, they have very small grids. Greenwood Utilities probably has 80,000 customers. So I'm not sure anybody in the room knows, but it's 17,500 customers, our sweet spot, or is, is 16,000, 15,000, 28,000? I don't know. But I think what some of us on the board were just, were just wondering is, is just to grow, to be growing, and you're not picking up water and sewer and you're going to have to provide fire and police and other services. You know, it's not always possibly for the amount of abloom tax revenue gained, a win-win. And of course, everybody thinks, you know, you just, well, let's go out here and get this, that's $100 worth of taxes. Well, there's some obligation to that. So again, I don't know, but I, along the lines of this talking with Duke, looking at possibly partnerships, I mean, things that the other 31 cities might want to do that we're starting, you know, a task market up here. I think that, I think I read that, are we comfortable at where we are or do we, because we don't have this huge debt we used to have, do we have to grow the system? Do we need to grow the system? I mean, I would like it to be a situation where people want to come on our system like they do our sewer.
I, I think a lot of that, Mayor, is a case by case basis. I mean, if we had a tire plant, we may have to deal with the stench of them making tires, but they sure do produce a lot of electricity without a whole lot of grid improvements that would need, necessary, need to be necessary. But we'd have to have the substations to be able to support it. But it all depends, you know, residential base, if you have large, large subdivisions that are, as you're talking about case in point, that are extended out into your, your grid areas and you're having to do a, a major infrastructure addition as well as your public safety requirements for those areas. That's something that this board needs to really consider about whether or not they wish to annex them or not. Yes, great sewer customers, but there'll be a sewer customer either way because we're the only sewer provider in the area. And those sewer customers get charged, you know, and water customers get charged double rates if they're outside the city. But from an electric standpoint, right now, it's really more of a, our desire to serve. And if it's, unless it's in the gray area, and then they have a choice. So I definitely agree with you. It is a case by case basis as to whether or not those are customers that we wish to have and whether we want to extend our grid and, and our system.
I have another question, Mayor, that we didn't really touch on. I'm just curious about the different rate structures that we have in consolidating those rates. You know, what impact that might have? Because I believe at our work session retreat, we talked about, I don't know, what do we have? 10, 15 different rate structures? And by consolidating that, would that, would that help us? Do we need to, you know, give direction on that? How do we, you know, move forward? Because I think today, I, I don't want to leave this or end this session without specific instruction and specific direction so we don't have to come back and do this again. So I hope we're all either going to take a hand vote or whatever we're going to do to give direction so we can move on.
I was planning on following up with that.
Okay.
At the appropriate time. Would you like me to finish this analysis?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's okay.
Thought we were finished on that.
Go to the end. So here's basically a summary sheet. I tried to break it down in simple terms. The top of it is excludes the discussion of a $10 million bond and gives you options of whether we're 90 days cash or 120 days cash. Either way, it looks like we're good with maintaining at least $1 million in our rate stabilization fund after 2023. So I think that's pretty palatable. I complicate things and I introduce this $10 million bond. And that's the lower two graphs. And as you can see, we start to, we start to draw heavily on our rate stabilization down to zero in the 20, year 2022, if we're trying to maintain 120 days cash. And then worst case is if we get another rate increase next year, we reduce down to, our rate stabilization down to zero in 2021, but we're still not below 108 days. So for, for me, I'm thinking it's, it's, it's not far off and reasonable that to pursue the interest and further information in the bond based on the finances show. We have some wiggle room there if we were to proceed that we could support it. And the, and the bonding companies are going to tell us whether or not we can. So I'm at the point where I'm looking.
I don't, I don't remember if you were infusing the rate stabilization.
Can I misspeak?
On that last chart, I mean, were you putting the rate stabilization and?
Yes. Yes, he was. That, basically his summary.
Well, excuse me, I see.
The summary is utilizing rate stabilization to offset both this year and next year's increases and what year you would effectively get down to where we want to set these base minimums. It could be either 110, 90 days, whatever it is. But essentially with the worst case scenario being at the bottom, that excludes the 2020 rate and the 2019 rate that we really need to make the decision on today about. And including the $10 million bond, he can make it to 2021 and not dip below 108 days. That's essentially what the summary sheet up there says.
But we, we do know that local government commission does not allow, enterprise funds have to stand alone. They can't be subsidized by the general fund. But having said that, the only way we did those two rate decreases originally, Mr. Stevens, were by fiduciary review of the current expensing of the electric enterprise fund. And the board made adjustments to that. Is that correct, sir?
That is correct. And that was the first 3%. That was more of a operational personnel review of the entire organization to determine where we could see some efficiencies. Then we had 12%, which was passed along as the wholesale rate adjustment from the asset sale.
Well, prior to that, I'm talking to you.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. I mean, we asked you, we, we gave you some probably out in the left field projections as to what we wanted to do and you were able to figure out how to do it.
I think you told me you'd like to see five and I brought you three.
Right.
And along with six and a half and four, or 6% from the water and four and a half.
Well, I think, I think we're kind of exhausting this other than to say, what are the projections of Duke? Have you looked at our competitor, Duke, as to what their rates are probably going to do between now and the same period of time? I know they asked for a 17% rate increase to the Utilities Commission. And so how, to maintain parity or close thereof, how, what are you seeing with Duke customers?
On the retail side, I'm not familiar with what their forecast is.
It would be good if we could have that information. I'm just, again, seeing people commenting that we have the highest, again, highest rate in the state, which I don't believe we do. I would like to see our benchmark cities, what they're charging per kilowatt hour with this, if they're taking on the increase, not. I just would like to have that information generally. It's not going to change the way I want to vote or anything like that. But I think it's good information so that we can educate our customer base as to what they're paying in comparison to other people in the state. I think it, you know, especially our benchmark cities in eastern North Carolina, Kinston, all of that, you know.
In anticipation of that, staff put together a direct comparison between our current rates and Duke's current rates, both on the residential and commercial side. And I handed that out to you folks.
I know there were quite a few where we had a rate, but Duke didn't have one to compare to just because of the way we have a, a rate versus other cities.
But when you, if you look, look at those, I think that some of those comparisons are very, very favorable. And it's a message that, that at least as your director, I need to get out to folks and, and educate them. And it's an ongoing process.
So for full disclosure and transparency, at any time we as a board, not being on the defense, can offer any information to our citizens as to what you are doing. If this needs to go on our, on our channel three or whatever, I mean, this is factual. And, you know, before statements like our own Facebook remain, somebody needs to look at this information if that so pleases the board. That I think we're in good shape.
I do too.
Certainly when you consider reliability.
I think you've done a wonderful job.
Yes, ma'am, Alderman Harris.
No, I just wanted to know if we can go ahead and make the motion on whether we need to.
I would love that.
Yes. Mayor, I would, if there's no further discussion, I would like to make the motion that we do not decrease, I mean, not increase the utility rates for the next two years or just do one year.
Well, you're, you're making the motion.
Well, based on the information, okay, for the next year, based on the information that the director provided to us.
Utilizing the stabilization fund?
Yes, utilizing the stabilization fund.
To make up the difference.
At, I think, 90 days where we already are, I don't think we need to change to 120.
Second, Allison.
We have second, can we have some discussion? I, I, I'm just going to open this discussion by saying, I'm not, from what our power agency has told us, unless I'm on a riverboat, I'm a riverboat gambler, I don't want to see an increase till 2025. I want the city to sustain, to be able to sustain current rate structure with absolutely no increases anticipating that the debt service will be paid off in 2025. And so I don't, I don't want to come back a couple of years from now and discuss this. I want to be a goddamn.
Well, I don't either, that's why I'm trying to get all the years packed into one motion.
Amendment to the two years.
Madam clerk, would you read back the motion?
Yes, to not increase the utility rates for the next year based on information provided by the director and to utilize the stabilization, stabilization fund to make up the difference and keep the days cash on hand at 90 days.
See, I'm going to, I'm going to vote, I mean, I'm just going to say this is discussion, I'm going to vote no for it, but it's going to look like I'm going to get.
Can I update my motion? I would like to amend my motion that we, like what the mayor said, that we don't raise rates for the, until the, up until the year 2025, based on that same information.
If I could just chime in, and I, I know the spirit and your, and your thinking, but just to add a legal issue, that motion is not going to be binding going forward. It's a statement today that, that, that captures your vision and your plan going forward, but this board or the next board could change their mind at a future meeting.
Okay. Well, I'm going to say 2021.
But there's nothing wrong with the motion, just understanding that it's, it's not going to be the law.
Okay, well, I'm going to say 2021 because that's when our term ends here. Just because like the mayor says, I don't want to have to come back here and, and discuss this. I don't want our constituents getting frustrated because we're having three o'clock meetings about utility rates going up. I feel like this is going to give some peace of mind to these individuals that we don't have this discussion until 2021 when the new board comes on if we need to have the discussion.
Completely understand.
Gotcha.
Now, okay.
Do you still second that?
Do you agree with that motion?
Sure. I guess I, I do. I just want to make sure that we don't back ourselves in a corner if we, if there's a World War III tomorrow and costs skyrocket, then obviously they can still come back to us.
This is based on present economic project. This is based on present model. Now, having said that, what I'm trying to stress to, to the board is that we have a history as high as 25, 30, 30% higher rates than Duke. I'm trying to send a message that this board is very sensitive to the rate structures of our city and that we want investment in the city, both in industrial and commercial customers. And I'm trying to send the voice that we are sensitive to the concerns of the public, that we have an elastic, we, we have an elastic customer base, people cannot go elsewhere. That's what makes, that's what upsets our customers. If you don't like the price of gas one place elastically, you can go somewhere else and get your gas. They can't do that here. And so I'm just trying to make sure with not being in violation of my oath of office that I'm out here trying to get things approved that are not realistic. I'm just trying, there's nothing to say to future date, if any catastrophic events come, happen, that the board can't make, can't amend that policy that's been set. So I, I understand what we're dealing with here.
I just want to make one clarification. Because you said that our rates are 25 to 30%.
I'm saying way back.
Okay, but not today. Because again, I want to make sure, because that's the message that is out there. And I'm continually trying to educate the public that our rates are pretty much parity in some cases. Now, you know, commercial might be different, but in, so I'm talking residential rates. These are the people that we talk to on a regular basis where even if not close.
Yeah, I was, I was talking about. I was talking about prior to those rate adjustments that the board did, both prior to the buyout and after the buyout, that we probably, depending on which model you're looking, you're, you're researching, that we are probably 10, 11% higher than Duke at this time period.
Am I permitted to make a comment during the discussion process?
Yes, sir.
I would, I would encourage the board to consider having me come back annually and giving a health check on what the rates are. So I don't foresee this ever really going away, this discussion. Whether or not you have to take action could be based on what the, the health of our finances in our utility is, based on that time, at that time.
Can I suggest it be sent in an email? Because I feel like we get our city in uproar when we put these type of conversations on the agenda knowing that what you just said, you used the word, we're, we're healthy. And I feel like you can give us an update, but I don't think we need to schedule a special meeting and have long-winded conversations.
Can I, can I make a recommendation here? I, I think what Charlie is really talking about is coming before the board to give a department, which we, we sort of do with y'all monthly in providing you an update. We could modify our monthly reports such that it provides that. But ultimately, maybe an annual update as to where we are. it provides that, but ultimately, maybe an annual update is where we are. It's not saying we're going to discuss electric rates like this one. Obviously, we needed to discuss this one with you, because we don't have clear direction on which way the Board wants to move with it. So, but now, with this meeting, we will have clear direction. I think what Charlie's talking about is kind of a departmental update as to where we are with our financial situation. Here's where we are. Everything looks good. Any questions, Board? You know, that kind of thing.
Is there anybody that objects on the Board to the fact that I think the spirit of the Board in this discussion today is that there, regardless of the motion which we're fixing to vote on, that the spirit of the Board is that there be no rate increases based on those two projected, projected wholesale rate increases?
That's right.
Okay, I'll go along with that. So, could you read the motion back again? This is a very serious situation here. I mean, people getting bills, they'll want to know that we thoroughly... Okay?
Not to increase the utility rates until 2021, utilize the stabiliz, stabilization fund to make up the difference and keep the day's cash on hand at ninety days.
I, I, I wouldn't say 2021, where we can come back and discuss, because that makes it seem like we will raise them in 2021.
Well, between retreat and annual budget session, I think there's plenty of opportunities to discuss the health of the Electric Enterprise Fund, but...
Here, let me make this easy. I amend the motion to say that we will not increase the utility rates for 2019 and 2020, based on the projections that were provided by the Director in regards to this year's increase and next year's possible increase, and to keep it at ninety days.
Second, or should I say like fourth, since I said the fourth? I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion?
Good job, everybody.
Let's have a roll call. Let's, I mean, that's a motion, so let's have a roll call starting with Alvin Bingle.
Alvin Bingle?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alvin Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alvin Kinsey?
Yes.
Alvin Best?
Yes.
Alvin Odom?
Yes.
Anything further at this time concerning electricity?
What do we do as far as the ten million dollars as the bond?
I'm looking for guidance, your support on whether or not you would like me to continue looking into a, a revenue bond to do up to ten million dollars in capital improvements.
Well, do you think that we should have discussions with Duke about a lot of things first, or does that have anything to do with the bond?
I think it can go concurrently.
Concurrently, yeah. I agree to do that. So, I would make the motion to give direction, give direction, that we start the process of preparing for a bond for capital improvements.
Second.
Motion seconded, discussion. Let's have a roll call starting with, I guess, sir.
Question, Mr. Savatelli, what would the annual debt projection be on that ten million dollar bond? And when would it, when do you expect it to start?
Probably looking, probably looking at FY twenty-one. That would be the first, if we do the full ten years, probably about four percent. It's starting about FY twenty-one would be the, for, for first make debt service payments. Right now, I'll give you the numbers for debt, for twenty-year bond. It's about seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars a year is the debt service. Would finish up in FY forty.
How many years?
That's, that's twenty years. Also, looking at the possibility of doing just fifteen.
Well, when we hit that twenty twenty-five, we might can make a dent on that debt service amount.
And we, we also have, on this spreadsheet, we have existing debt, one point eight, one point seven, one point six each year gradually comes down. Is that our AMI?
Uh, that's, that's all existing debt that we have. That's...
So, AMI is included in that?
AMI is included in that.
Along with everything else?
Yes.
So, our current debt load, aside from our asset sale to Duke, which is three point four million annually, aside from that, in two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, our current debt load rolls off altogether, correct?
Correct.
What's our outstanding buyout debt?
For...
The buyout, where we, where we were, the stranded cost of the buyout?
Oh, uh, that I don't know, so...
Okay.
I need to get that question.
Seven times three point four million.
So...
Mayor, if you don't mind, I know we've talked about revenue bonds as a way of doing that. I'm, I was curious if, if the possibility of just straight loans would be something that we could also do, because you're making direction for us to, to seek revenue bonds. If we were able to look at a debt structure to where we could potentially just get a loan that we could pay off early if we run into twenty twenty-five versus extending this thing out for a twenty-year period, you know, that might be something you wanted to say for us to explore, debt service options with regards to the capital improvements that Charlie discussed today.
So, I amend my motion to say that we start the process to determine...
Financing options.
Financing options for debt service on capital improvements, up to ten million dollars.
You, you were second, aren't you?
No, Bobby was the second.
Bobby, I'm sorry. It's just about what that, I mean, number money in phase two and three are, why would you, I mean, I know that you're going to do one first, but why, why would you not incorporate all of those in that discussion?
They'll all be considered holistic.
Okay.
But I, I don't think it would make sense right now to start those others.
Well, we could operationally probably take care of the seventy-three thousand and a hundred and some thousand, so we probably wouldn't be financing that. Is that right?
That's what I was saying.
So, so Mark, I understand now that you will come back to us with a recommendation, whether it's to finance it or go, proceed with a bond?
Generally speaking, if we look at the Bond Council option, obviously, you're going to have to approve that Bond Council agreement. Similarly, if we look at the, the financing options, generally, JR sends out a, a RFQ to banks, an RFP, whatever, for proposals on a, a financing option for us. That would have to be approved as well. But obviously, you know, I think Charlie's got a little homework that he needs to do in that, in that regard, as far as what a true estimate and true costs are going to be. So, so I think that we have a, a pretty good number there, based on some of the things that we've seen, but, but obviously, you're going to see it multiple times. But this gives us the marching orders to continue down.
Okay. So, we have a motion second in front of us, so we ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
Let's have a roll call, starting with Alvin Odom.
Alvin Odom?
Yes.
Alvin Best?
Yes.
Alvin Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alvin Astor?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alvin Bingle?
Yes.
Question about electricity. You know, a lot of times when you have a, a storm like we had in September, and you spray some CRC and clean your connections and all, you, you're okay for a year or so till that corrosion and everything comes into play, or, or are we, how are we, and do you anticipate issues a year up the road with some of our underground equipment, that we're, that we're going to have problems? Are you forecasting for that?
It's, it's budgeted to do some of it. On underground cabling, we're not doing any predictive maintenance right now. I asked that question a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if it makes sense to do it. Obviously, we'd want to look at maybe some of the older infrastructure, if we were to go out proactively and do that. Some of the testing can be disruptive, and by the way and the means you're testing, you could cause a fault. So, there's some risk that way. There's some other technologies that we could look at, but just as far as planned predictive maintenance goes on underground systems, we're not doing a lot of things there proactively right now.
So, Bobby, is that something that FEMA reimbursement, is there any, your experience with that, those type of preventive items that might come up later outside of the, the FEMA range?
He would have to, he would have to show damage, storm, prove it's storming.
You can't show that damage right now, but it's going to happen later.
A couple manhole covers float away.
Okay. Just a question. What else is the Board?
Um, Charlie, I have one question for you. If we do all this underground, I mean, all this new substation stuff, and even this new line that Duke may be putting in, is it, would this stuff be underground to kind of prevent what happened next time?
I'll put in as much...
I mean, it's kind of hard to mow over an underground system, yeah.
I'll put in as much underground as we can afford. Obviously, I'm, I'm targeting areas out near County Line Road, and that ties back into old Airport Road with some strategic electrical circuits. Obviously, we'd like to do that underground and do that in conjunction with those, the future plans to widen Airport Road. So, where it's strategically possible, we're going to look at underground first. I also think we have the resources on staff that we can do a lot of the skilled labor ourselves, which could cut down on some of that cost and, and maybe allow us to do more underground than if we were to hire a contractor to do that sort of thing. In, in some points, you know, it just has to come up over, over the air, but...
Okay.
Couple more follow-up items. You have a few more minutes?
Yes, sir.
Please. And I'd like to come back and follow up on a few things, if you have an interest in. One would be rate consolidation. We mentioned it at the, I mentioned it briefly at the workshop. We have a, a number of electric rates that are underutilized. Only a few customers are utilizing those rates. They're stepped rates. They don't really match what our wholesale power costs are. I'd like to come back with more information and details and make a recommendation on consolidating those, if you have any interest in...
I mean, is that something that you're going to kind of talk with? I know there's several of those rates that are like singular and individual accounts, or is, is that something you're going to work with the, with those accounts on before you bring them?
Yes, and that's why I'm saying, I'm not prepared to have that discussion today. I need to do some homework and, and dive into that before I come back with it.
Okay.
But I'd like to, just looking for your support that I can come back.
Yes, sir. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
The rate consolidation?
Yep.
The other part of that is, we did a cost of service study that was required by the strategic plan. That is finished. If you're interested, I'd like to come back and, and talk about the cost of service.
Tell us a little more about that.
Cost of service study basically will help you analyze, it does a number of things, but it'll help you analyze whether or not you're covering, whether each rate class is recovering its cost of service. So, can each rate class sustain itself? And we did a study on that, and we have more information that if you want me to, I can get better prepared on it, come back and have that discussion.
I'm, I'm fine with it. I trust you guys on that.
Yeah, yeah. There's, there, I mean, you know, the history of rate structure in New Bern is, is, is for the mutual benefit of the customer and the city, and to grow the city and a number of other factors. So, yeah, we can do that.
So, I won't be coming back, though?
Sir?
Sir?
Yeah, the Board, what?
I, I'm fine with...
With what?
Their knowledge on that. I don't, I don't need to know the cost of service.
I trust him, too. I trust that.
If you want to report back to us, we kind of have full faith in your thought process on cost of services, and anytime you want to bring that before the Board or whatever, we would, we would so entertain that. Is that what the Board's saying?
I'm not. I, I...
Well, I didn't hear you that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't want to hear. I've heard enough about electric rates for a while. So, yeah, the rate consolidation, I, I get all that. The cost of service, that's all the behind-the-scenes stuff that you guys, the electrical engineers and finance guys, you guys salivate over all that. I don't need to know it personally, so.
How does the Board feel about that?
It's fine.
Okay, that's kind of micromanaging, and we don't necessarily do that, I don't think, as a Board. So, we're good with what you're doing until we tell you we're not good with what you're doing.
And I'd like to know if you are interested in having me come back and talk about our LED lighting rates, and...
Are we able actually to reduce the rates because of the LEDs? Is that correct? Or is that not correct?
I don't understand the question.
LED, maybe I'm thinking of LED streetlights.
Streetlights, area lights, all of them. I would like to come back with a discussion about a rate for those.
Is it going to be less or more?
We don't have a rate for them now, so there's...
Okay.
Don't, I can't say it's going to be more.
Is it, is it a way for people to save by going to LED? I think that's the question, you know?
It's a, it's a way to ensure that the utility is charging the right rate for the lights that they're installing.
So, are you talking strictly?
Streetlights and area lights.
Streetlights and area lights. We don't have a set rate for those now?
Not for an LED lamp. We have them for other types of lamps. We have them for high-pressure sodium, mercury vapor, metal halide.
And, but you're doing away with everything now, and strictly going with LEDs?
Yes, sir.
And is that not supposed to be saving us money?
LEDs typically cost more for the lamp, but cost less for energy. So, there is a, a calculation, there is an analysis that goes along with what is the cost of service for an LED. I've done some work on that. I'm not finished with it. If you're interested in establishing an LED rate, then I would, I would get prepared to bring that back.
Just, just keep in mind, your biggest customer is the City of New Bern.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. City of New Bern, what, what is your thought process?
I would, I would, if, if I was sitting in y'all's seat, I would tell Mr., Mr. Bouchard to, to review it, analyze it, and come back to us with a, a recommendation on the rate.
Mr. Bouchard, would you review it, analyze it, and come back with us with a recommendation?
Everybody, everybody good with that? The only thing about that, and I know you've probably read up on it, there are, there are some concerns about certain LED, and you are familiar with that, and our implementation would not be those things I don't want to get into, but you're familiar with that?
You're talking about soft, soft white, or warm, warm white, cool white?
Colorway.
Yes, I mean, are, are we, you know, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know which light. I just get, I get, I've actually had complaints about some LED lighting in the City of New Bern, private lighting. So, I just...
The few that they replaced out in some of my areas, people love them. They want to know what they can do to...
When you said it, when you said that...
I do, too. I love all of them. But, you know, I do get complaints and...
They are different.
Have you had a complaint? Hasn't, okay, so you haven't had a complaint?
The only complaint I've had was the Christmas lights, and we took our old Christmas lights down, and they were like yellow, and we replaced them with those. Everybody says it doesn't like Christmas anymore, but that's the only complaint I've had.
Just, I want, I want you to bring that up and, you know, just keep us in safe harbor on that.
Then the other item I'd like to address with you is the strategic plan makes mention of a public utility advisory board. And I'd like to know if you're interested in me starting to work on developing that. I think it would help me, as a Director, if nothing else, as a sounding board, to possibly go through a lot of these complex discussions throughout the year, and discuss those with a competent advisory board, get their input, and then we see if they have support and they're willing to make recommendations that are a little easier and a little more palatable for your position. Obviously, that's, I have to consult with our legal guidance on how we can go about that, what does an advisory board mean, how many's on it, who to pick, and that's the whole, that's what I'd have to get into.
Duke, don't we already have that in place? It's just not active?
I don't recall if we even took it out with the ordinance or not. It still may be in the ordinance, just not, it's not staffed.
The, the main point is here is this is not going to be a complaint with your Bill Advisory Hearing Board. This is an advisory board that, as you've heard today, some very high-level rate discussion, capital improvement discussion, things like that, that, that this Board could have a representative supporting them and updating y'all on some of this stuff and giving some guidance preliminarily, so that if he's going down the right path or we're going down the right path, and then at that point, you know, obviously, it still would come to the Board for a final decision, but at that point, it's kind of been vetted by some, some high-level analysis and, and thought process from, from an advisory board. But once again, this is what came out of the strategic plan.
I had just assumed, Mr. Mayor, if I, Tim, I had just assumed personally to hear any recommendations come from the expert here, as well as our city manager. You know, I, I don't see any need of it. I think we'd be a lot better off you coming directly with us, to us, within, just like you did today. That's just my opinion. It's just something else to, that's going to tie up your time, a lot of your time.
Is that, is that staff's preference, or would you guys want that?
I just wanted to add on this list, because it's something I saw in the strategic plan. Certainly, I would, I would like a sounding board. plan. Certainly, I would, I would like the sounding board on these, these complex decisions and discussions that need to go on continuously. The utility is very dynamic. I can, I can operate without it.
I, I think another option here, just to kind of give some, some insight, a potential another option here, would be that there be three representatives of the board be assigned to work with Charlie and re, I guess, evaluate this from time to time at Charlie's request, and, and that eliminates the need specifically for an advisory board, where you're gonna have to have minutes taken, where you're gonna have to have all this different, you know, complex work done, from a, from a legal standpoint, as far as public notice and, and so forth and so on, that if there is just a, a, a working group of the board that would work with Charlie and be, you know, maybe a, a utilities working group of the board, I think that would probably help a lot in, in, in what he needs.
So no, raise your hands at once.
We'll just bring.
If you might have any opinions on that.
That automatically qualifies.
And we think we can come back with, with a vision for how that might work, sure.
Okay.
This wouldn't be tonight to, to launch off on that.
Okay. Anything else, Charlie?
I don't believe so.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Say it again.
Adjourn.
Have a motion by Alderwoman Harris and Alderman Kinsey. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.